Hi, Timmy Carter. You're a fellow veteran.
Yeah. No, you're all right. You're going up?
No, you're all right.
Go ahead. All right, Timmy Carter, I just wanted to bring to attention, I've had several people, I'm gonna look into what I need to do, or what we need to do as a rec board to start a youth basketball week. Um, I brought it up with several people at the last several football games, and I've had some meetings, and how many people have, "Yes, yes, yes, yes." Um, I've already talked to the principal of the high school, and the varsity head coach of basketball, and they're both willing to do whatever we need to do to use their gym until we, I'm not sure exactly what's going on here, there's just no word in mouth, get that straight away, and get this gym back in order. So they're willing to do whatever we need to do to get that moving forward. Um, I've talked to Ms. Register, which is the principal at the middle school, and apparently she used to do it, uh, several years ago. Uh, her and Scott used to do it as their own private, um, wasn't affiliated with anybody. And they had, I think she said eighty-five kids the first year, and a hundred and thirty-five consistently after that. Um, and I see Ebro does not have one, I don't think Walsall, I was not even thinking about it, um, so, and I'm pretty positive we could probably steal from Bonneville. Um, so, we're looking at a pretty good turnout immediately, so I would like to see what we need to do if I'm getting involved in it. We're a little late this year, but, um, if I'm not mistaken, the senior, uh, Ms. Register said that he does a basketball week, uh, camp every January, and he's willing to push it back to February, so that way our season kind of rolls right into his basketball camp, and it kind of makes it a consistent flow to help him get more kids, it helped him out, and that's why he's headed over.
And how long is your shrink in your baseball and your football?
I think it'll do. Um, from what I understand, some kind of agreement needs to be made between the city and the county to be able to put kids enrolled in our program at their school, whatever that youth agreement, and then insurance is really all that's left. And of course, that can be paid with dues that he signed up. But, um, as far as, I've already lined up jerseys for free donated, and a couple basketballs to go start. So, it's really, whatever that agreement needs to be made, and an agreement to go for the talent, and much insurance, and get that started.
Can I piggyback onto that a little bit real quick, if you don't mind? Um, also, the, uh, middle school has shown interest also of you letting us use their gym too. Um, one thing that, uh, I think that might have worked out is, I was wondering if, uh, for their softball season, if they're, they can, like, we make an agreement, we use their gym, they kind of use our rec field for softball. I know they use it for practice, but they're interested in using it also for the games.
Baseball field.
What's that?
Baseball field.
That, that's for baseball, uh, middle school baseball, but the, uh, middle school is wondering about the, uh, the softball field. Um, they have all their concession stuff, they, they have coolers and all their stuff, like, the Pepsi coolers that we got in our thing, if they can, like, bring some of that stuff into our concessions, you know, uh, we can put locks and stuff like that on our stuff, and then theirs, you know, we'll have their locks on theirs also too. But, that's just a way, I think, maybe partnering up, you know, the high school or the middle school, um, but...
We need to work.
We just, uh, try to get, you know, some good relations.
What you need to do is write what you need, y'all two need to write, like, y'all beat down, and give it a chill, so you can contact the right person, the middle schools, and get it, and go ahead and get it started.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
My Ebro. I'm, uh, oh my gosh. I don't have nothing but bad news. We got a truck down, our little truck. I took it to the shop, and they put a new distributor in it, and got it back, and it run for a week, and it's, it's out again. I, it's not the distributor this time, I'm pretty certain that it's pretty fouled up. As far as, we probably gonna have to look and get in a new truck or something.
They wouldn't care about shop, they don't look at it?
Yeah, we can, but, uh, it's gonna have to be drug there.
You, you kind of watch what you need to do.
It's like it ain't getting no flow, I'm telling you, we need to look and get a new truck. Or something used, I mean, it's something where we can get around, um...
You need to find something, bring it to us, bring it to the council.
Oh.
We have to make sure that one can be fixed.
It's actually, it may look like it's a cab, but it's converted, but it's taking it, but it ain't putting air out.
You fix that cab, that's all right.
Well...
It worked for us, didn't it?
Uh, took it to, uh, what is their name in Bonneville?
All Star Tire.
Take it to Nichols.
To Nichols, Joey up there. All right, we'll have to start an account with him, that ain't gonna be a problem. Oh, the belt press is down again, I've been on them about getting a screen, we're trying to locate a touchscreen for it, but, uh, I talked to Mr. Cook over there, and he said if we don't get the wasting with it, then we ain't gonna be able to set no more slugs.
How can we, how are we gonna get around that screen?
I'm, I'm working on, there really ain't no way to get around it, I talked to Rick Rollard, and he said it's not the screen that's the problem, it's the program in the screen, you got to go through so many people to get that program into the screen.
Is this one of the pieces that we have, that will be from to a screen on it, or is it so different?
No, this is a different, this is to the belt press.
So it's basically about the same principle?
Yeah, it's, it's the same, same ordeal, that you got the computer program, that's got to be put into that screen to match up with the communications on there.
Can you call that computer guy, if I figure out something to look at it?
Our, uh, this, um, no, I'm not, can you use him or no, yes?
That program is owned by that company.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not an operation program, like, like the status free ones.
Yeah.
This is proprietary. You gotta get it from there.
So they got to come do it?
Well, they can take the, the touchpad and program it in another location out of Manhattan, if they're still doing it up there. They can program it, just send it to Bulldog, 'cause they have all the data. Uh, we've done that in the past, ordered one, if they programmed it, they sent it to us.
You get, you may get that information, still thought I hit you up?
I, I got it, the pumping process, they, they're supposed to be, uh, doing it. We're working on it. Oh, it's Christmas lights is another issue, uh, you know, last year, someone stole some of our major guys, they stole the wise man, angel, I think a sheep. So I don't know what direction you want to go, you want me to put it out there like it is, or just, uh, get a new one?
We don't want it out there, that's not all there, it's not there. I knew somebody who spilled some of it last year.
Yeah, we filed a report, but they never, never found it. I don't mind if it was different.
Wait, wait, look at something after Christmas, is it maybe, yeah, after Christmas and say, or something on the other side? Or pieces?
So you're just gonna put these lights on the trees and?
Uh, she got some.
I have some, I mean, yes. I have some stuff that I'll bring for next Saturday, but I don't wanna leave it on the square, 'cause I don't want my stuff to get gone too, but I'll bring it like Saturday morning, so that we'll have a decorate, 'cause we're gonna do Santa Claus on the square after the parade, and then maybe just have the lights.
All right.
Can we just put, just do the lights?
That's what I got going on.
Anybody got any questions for Mike?
Mike? Um, we've had, um, several fire calls and several rec calls since the last meeting. Everything's going well with the department, uh, Michelle had ordered in some parts we needed to get our compressor going, compressor's back going again, um, we're working on finaling up the details on the ice machine, and should have, be able to get that in the next week, hopefully. We've got our pancake breakfast this Saturday morning, six to nine, everybody come out? Other than, that's about all that's going on right now.
Anybody got any questions for Mike?
This is an update from, you take one and pass it, let's see, update for the FEMA on the square, or the FEMA, um, from our engineers, it gives us an update, they did come out on, um, they did come out last Friday, you guys will keep these in this order, so I can go through and go through all of these with you guys. Um, I was, I've been out since last Thursday, I had surgery, and, um, no, just keep it, okay, yeah, this, this packet doesn't give me, keep the whole packet, please. The first one is just take one and pass it, and the next one is keep the whole packet, please. Keep that whole packet, please. Okay, here's the situation that has come up, um, okay, first thing, they are wanting to do the, uh, pre-construction conference, uh, and I'm giving that to Bulldog, he's gonna look at it and get back with Joe, um, with our firm in Tower, and get that scheduled and everything. The next paper is, um, it's got some arrows on the side of it here, and basically, this is just a continuation of the emails that I, email chain that I had given you guys from, uh, Minaj, who's with DEP, between them and our contractor, um, for the SRF money, the loans that we have, and, um, basically, Minaj was the five thousand three hundred and five dollars that we're holding on our contractors, they're wanting something to be done that needs money, because this needs to get closed out.
Minaj pulling something down?
Yes, sir, and then, so that's where we were, she followed up on last Tuesday with Scott too, and we were in email chain here, letting her know, you know, what's, what progress we have right now with that project getting it closed out. So that's there. Um, the next item we have up on the top, it says SRF, um, WW is six seven oh two two. Okay, what this is, is if you start at the back of the page, if you start at the back of the emails and read forward, basically what it's saying is that, um, Bobby is sending an email to Minaj with DEP, and basically, he's stating that the problems that we're having on the sewer line that's over on Dawkins, or not Dawkins, Cook Circle in Ferris, basically, um, that sewer line has known about, it was in a field, it was not known about, it was in a field, once the new project was completed, it was discovered that a section of the existing sewer pipe started backing up. We do go back and try to connect it to the new sewer, but it appears that portion of the existing line is having problems of passing it along to the new line. Question is, are there funds remaining that could be used to replace or repair this section of line? Um, so then, ca, uh, Minaj, Minaj?
Right there.
Yes, sir.
What they done, what they have done is part of the original contract. Correct.
Is that correct, Bulldog?
Yeah.
Original contract on that project, that was part of it, right, the Ferris and Cook Circle?
I had seen the original project.
They, they missed it.
But it's...
They missed it, they had to come back.
It was, it was missed, and it was, uh, put in with this, this first part, but...
Right.
The engineer missed hooking it up, huh?
Okay, that was on Wednesday, though.
All that work was supposed to be included in their bid.
Yes, sir. So now, on the thirtieth, Bobby, uh, engineer, is contacting Minaj again, and he's saying that enclosed is a copy of proposed project location map that was provided in the application to report for the SRF loan, the problem is located along Dawkins Street. The area of concern is noted on the map as city, uh, is Cook Circle, and, um, you see on the sewer map that it was provided by the town, doesn't appear to be sewer along Cook Circle. In the field, there was no indication that there was a sewer line later, we found out the manholes approximately eight feet to eighteen feet of, of under roadway. Um, the new lines were installed along Dawkins Street, there was no indicator of the existing sewer line, approximately thirty, forty-five days, the sewer started backing up the roadway near the intersections, um, this is discovered, it's sewer line, a new manhole was added, and the existing sewer line was connected, but there appeared to be a problem back approximately three hundred feet or so to the existing sewer line on Cook Circle, Culver. Um, my preliminary estimate, Bobby is saying, is to make the connection incorrect, the sewers thirty, is forty to sixty thousand dollars depending upon, uh, what needs to be done in the Culver crossing. Well, then, Minaj comes back and says that, um, well, Tim Banks is, Minaj sent this to Tim Banks, who is with DEP as well, and he basically states that, um, if the city will approve the planning documents, and see that the Cook Circle, Dawkins Street areas included on the proposed, page eighteen, Bobby, Bobby is asking for Vernon to use the remaining funds to fix this. Well, he's now saying we've got an extra seventy-eight thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars in our account, that's SRF.
But, they told us there was no more money, they told everybody, said, "Just leave," they'd done all the paving they could do, and that was all the money they had.
That's exactly why I'm bringing it to you guys, that's why I came in tonight, to make sure I brought this to you guys' attention of what's going on, that there was no money, I mean, we were, we've looked for how many months trying to get funding to make up the difference on the CDVG, um, and we had this kind of, you know, I mean, this money was out there, that could have been utilized.
This said, "Get" down, is that some of the last one?
This is on the SRF, that, that five thousand three hundred and five dollars that we're holding, now they're saying there's another seventy-eight thousand there. You know what I mean?
Scott needs to be here at the next meeting.
We need to make sure that he...
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, for sure. And then, um, also, on the next one up here at the top, I wrote some, everything, CDV engineers did the plans for the CDV project, I know you guys are all aware of that. Mid Tower people are asking, um, about the pump specifics, I did email Scott on this today, I forwarded this to him, but they needed some clarification because of the, I don't understand how this stuff works, so you guys can read through it and see the gallons per minute, and the pump, seventy footer, eighty, whatever, I don't, so I'm just keeping you aware that there's, there may be some issues monetarily, even if, if it matches up, if, once again, the SRF, the design, the things that CDVG did, don't, that don't work.
They say it.
Yes, okay. Um, but I wanted to make sure that everybody was, we were all on the same page as far as that goes. Is there any questions or anything with that?
I don't have any, I just think Scott needs to be here at next meeting, not Bobby.
Good thing, yeah.
Um, I will, uh, put the email out today on that for next Monday, at our meeting, if they haven't heard that time. Okay. The, uh, rural water, sent us an email stating that, um, Fort River Water Association, they're gonna be out Tuesday, the December twelfth through the fifteenth, and that works with Bulldog's schedule, um, to do the asset management for the rural water, this is for wastewater asset management, um, so I've given this to Bulldog for him to look over that, and to see what he needs to do. Again, I had put in my notes that the SRF, and we've gone through all this, and leading the work and everything, um, in talking about the FERD Act grants, I need to know where we, you know, we're, we're gonna take the thirty-three thousand from the regions account that was under roof, you know, and use that to, as our, under a CDVG.
To buy a rock.
Correct, to buy rock, or whatever we needed to get. And, but, where are we looking at taking the, because with the, at FERD Acts, we have to pay everything upfront, and it's a one-time draw only, so I need to know where is the council planning on coming up with the fifty thousand?
You have to draw the whole fifty thousand?
You get a one-time draw on the FERD Acts, and so, I mean, you, you have to pay everything out of pocket, and then they reverse you.
Well, that's what you used to pay. You used to, you do so much better, pay them together, request, and they pay you.
Well, I did verify it, just to be on the safe side, that it was that, and that's, my last conclusion was that it is a one-time draw, so that's something the council needs to keep, we need to look at where we want to target at that, if we're gonna get that money. There was, um, Miss Hewitt had put before, I had submitted a letter. Okay, we'll send it. Okay. Um, Christmas party is this Saturday, um, the fire department, uh, we've got the menu kind of laid out here for everybody, is, is everybody kind of in agreement with that? And I need to kind of know who's gonna be able to do the cooking, the decorating, preparing the food, getting everything ready, and what all needs to be, Tina's helping purchase some of the Dirty Santa, you know, the game that we played last year, some of the presents and everything for that, but we still, um, need to get the presents for all the kids and everything as well, and, um, for all the firefighters' children, as well as the council members' children as well, if anybody would want to donate towards that.
Who's cooking?
Why you keep looking at me?
I bought big grill, I cook, cook them all at one time, it's a little bit of a brick.
We tried, we cooked. Oh, there was no fire.
Welcome aboard, from here. Okay, um, I'll, um, I'll help with the decorating. Maybe Miss Brown will help me.
I'm a less, it's more person.
We'll keep it simple, definitely. Um, I guess, preparing the food and all that's gonna fall back on my office, so we'll be taking care of that, I guess, so it looks...
I did corn cobb.
Green beans. They want salad, corn on the cob, green beans, steak, bowls. And then the dessert will just be...
The salad is just bagged.
Whatever the council would like to do.
I'll get steak, the baked potato, and corn on cob.
You got that in here?
I'll do the green beans. I'm gonna do the Sam's, we get the cake out, just get the bags out.
Perfect, so thank you. That'll work good, I thought.
What about the oven stuff?
Oh, the kids, the chicken strips, we can just put those in the oven when we get there and cook those. That, that wasn't a big deal, meat and the macaroni cheese, I can do that.
Macaroni cheese. We don't have to get the chicken strips.
We'll go to Sam's Club, or Sam's, if you're asking, pick them up, or the best, that's Sam's, right?
I'm gonna get me, when I get the cookout, so we can...
You can tell me how you got it. Yes, ma'am, I'll go to the counter for you, little, and that's something before you guys leave tonight, to let me know how many will be coming with you.
What time are we, are we doing that, at seven? Six? That's fine. I need to verify.
Okay, um, we got the Christmas party taken care of, uh, the Christmas parade.
Drinks.
The drinks, we'll just do, I mean, a sweet tea, and then we'll grab some service from out at Sports Place. Is that, okay, all right. All right, Christmas parade, getting candy for whoever's gonna be riding the parade, is anybody, do we have a head count, who wants to ride?
I'll get mom candy. Also, um, the elementary school is gonna put in their bulletin that goes out Friday, that we're gonna have the Christmas parade, and we're gonna have pictures of Santa Claus after. And she said that anything like that with, you know, that's for the community like that, we can't, like, flood the bulletin, but something like that, it's for the kids, that they'll be glad to do an accident.
I'm kind of like Bulldog, I have some great things, the charge debate has wrapped up, their recommendations, that's gonna, back up to y'all, just to kind of start looking over some of the recommendations from the committee, we're gonna have more changes to make, things like that, so the council, what we, is, some of the coordinates, calling for, correct, asking voters, do they want these specific provisions? So we'll have an update from the evening about the FERD grant, I'll just get an update on that, um, the FEMA interlet hole, I did come back from the county tree, late last week, and doesn't have more, but it's still, that interlet hole, it's actually looking kind of, I have to worry it, it's very... We have, um...
It's great, you got anything? Mr. Schumler? Mr. Jolich? Down one thing, uh, that's, I guess we had, also, discussion, uh, so Michelle put plenty of notes in the book, there's, and, uh, my concern is, I know we've got county commissioners here for city, uh, the policy's the policy, dogma, you know, we had a lady come a couple meetings ago, and that's just by Justin, uh, you know, I know Michelle, things funnied off to us about the county, about the schools, I know, but the thing is, we give the one, we, everybody give, we give.
I want to tell you something, we want to be very careful about, um, being a station, because that could turn into a liability on the city, and we depend on it.
Yeah, and we in a workshop, on what we do.
Yeah, and, and the school, we, yeah.
We need to, uh, kind of, follow the same...
Backside. Back to the section.
We'll have to do something, 'cause, you know, it's getting the bees, back to back, and, uh, if it ain't one of them, it's, uh, I told you, maybe we're dealing with the county, and they only gonna pay the bees, the ancients, but, the city turning to Bulldog, man, honestly, no, man, but I know we got a policy, and the policy's no different, until we change it, uh, you know, concerned citizen, and I tell them, I don't know, there's nobody, they all, we all put our hands on each and every one, the same, I'm not a lot job, we got a little job, until we change the policy, the person got it right, I know we dealing with the school, I know we dealing with the county, but still, until we make an exception, you know, we gonna get feedback from the public, so it goes in. So, we in a workshop, you know, so, it's, it's happened, it's happened before.
I think we should, um, I think you're right, that we should review the policy, and we should write up a policy to address just such emergencies as that, because that wasn't the one. I think we can do that.
And you just put it as a, like, a resolution, you need to...
Go forward and, uh, county.
Well, the county, please, we, we, or the school, we know they pay to separate, to address everything out, two separate departments, I know that, I'm saying.
While we're on this here, are we still not letting RVs look up to public utilities?
Unless they've got a building permit, and we don't know about it, it's not there. If they got a building permit, they can pull one in, the county was...
Six months.
Six months, six months, they gotta do something. Six months, we gotta, customer on a shady road, he wants to hook their RV up to city utilities. And I was just making sure...
Is that just for six months? Or they probably go permanent?
I hadn't talked to them, they just come through today, I hadn't got a chance to call them, but...
Left it down on the end of the way? I think he's been sick for a long time, I worked on their condition years ago. Probably been down that road, ten years.
What about it from now?
Up on the, I, I know we weren't, weren't letting them, I was just saying that we was sticking to that, that policy.
That's the last thing that we were told in the office, the council, was that we wanted to put up any more, in the city.
Is it presently, is it hooked up to it now?
It's not currently hooked up, but they're wanting to get up.
Okay, if they, if they ask you about it, we're from, they're from.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Also thinking, oh, that too, maybe. Uh, Michelle, the note she made us. That previous meeting. And I might have heard all of them. Uh, maybe set the ownership of the MS. Cause I know we set the ownership until Terry gets back with us.
Didn't you table that? It was table that month.
It says in the paper.
Okay. Yeah, I'm less. Okay. We table.
The last thing I got, uh, brought my attention, uh, and Bulldog, you might know something about it. Uh, we've had this issue before. When you get your water turned off, we've had customers come up here, pay the bill, and, uh, individuals already cut the water back on. That is totally against the law. I mean, totally against the law. And that's the problem. Uh, we have and we've had it in previous past in the city. Uh, I guess Bulldog, you'll have to, uh, since you're super, you have to keep hold of it. I know one customer got the water cut off and they took it in our own hands and turned it back on. Contact somebody, previous council member, or make a turn of that. Wrong, wrong. That is wrong. It's totally against the policy. Uh, if it's going on, Bulldog, you know, they ask you to, you know, rectify, tell them to listen. That's jail time. Simple as that. You know, it's happening. We've had it happen in the past, but, uh, you know, why come over here and pay your bill now? You know, let it run till three days.
How many do we have that don't have locks?
I don't know.
Where they could be locked.
Don't you lock them, Bulldog, when you get on?
Yeah, we lock them.
So, so they're, they're, they don't have locks?
There's a couple around here that doesn't have locks. I mean. But, um, if you want to force this, you will run with it, but if I go out there, I need you to stand behind me now if I say you're going to jail on this.
If you put a lock on it and they cut.
I'm, I'm serious about it. Now, I don't want to look like, go over there and like have a phone call and be like, this guy here said I could do that.
Okay. Well, nobody from the council, and they're the only ones that have that authority. So nobody that's sitting here is gonna say that.
Wow, we'll make that clear.
And, um, and there's people, I mean, there's people that's went to jail before for cutting the, the lock.
Previous, if.
We'll, we'll run with that, I promise.
Well, that's, that's the ordinance. That's the thing, Bulldog, trying to let you know. And you know, you know exactly what I'm talking about. And you just get policy.
Cause the cops.
I don't care who they get, but shit cops, case you cut the lock. Right here, boys. They got to say something.
He calls the sheriff.
That's all I got here.
But we know you ain't got a problem doing here at all. You got it.
It's gonna happen.
Okay. I'm, I'm so proud of this. This is, uh, the TDC booklet of, for Washington County. And this is Soccer Spring, which is, you know, in Vernon. And so I, I just think that we are, we're well covered in it. It, um, we have Soccer Spring on the front. They have an article about the historical society, about, um, just different things from Vernon. And so they did a really good job. Talon actually worked with them when they were putting this together and I just got to go to that meeting the day that they hand them out, but these are really cool.
You didn't get all your work.
And, um, also, um, Mr. Goulding wants to have a meeting with, um, me and with you. We're working to put together a business expo to feature our businesses that's in the Vernon area. And, um, then also, um, as you know from this packet, we had a resident that had contacted about their water and said that a piece of their equipment was messed up because their water had been cut off. And he was not wanting to come to a council meeting, but he had asked me to bring it up. And I told him that the policy of the city was that we do not waive the fees. And there's, I mean, you know what time that the city hall opens up and what time it closes and you have to pay the bill.
Which, which one is that? I believe he was contacted the day, day before about his water and.
He was, because he called me the day before too. And that's pretty much it.
Anybody else got anything? Jimmy?
Yeah. On what Tina said about that, that today on Facebook, there was a drone coverage of the whole area of work.
Yeah, that'd be why grandson was shooting that this evening.
That's the new drone for the, the tech vocational school. Their new drone program.
Yeah, it was pretty nice.
Go ahead. That'll be on the agenda. Nobody's got anything. We'll adjourn this meeting.
May I go to adjourn?